I'd like to call this meeting to order, Oconee County Council, August 15th. We will begin with the public comment session. Several people signed up to speak tonight. We'll start with Mr. Donnie Woods. Please step up to the microphone, state your name for the record.
My name is Donnie Woody. I'm here today because I've been trying to get my creek that runs down my property checked out by DEHEC. Been down there many a time. Been down there as latest earlier today, and I've asked them, "Do you, or have you, or do you in the future plan to check this water?" And they insist that they don't check the water for just any bad cause. And I'm really wanting my water tested. I went to them with complaints of sewer smells and discoloration of water. And then by doing all this, in the process, they found a dam. A dam was opened up, and all the debris from the dam, the dam was made out of wood, made out of wood pallets and just scrap wood that was left there. And then it became, it came this hard rain, and it come downstream. And this, and this stream goes from all the way right here, Walhalla city limits, all the way down to Hartwell, where they drank the water out of Hartwell. And I'm just asking them to test the water, and they insist they're not going to do it. I'm here today, if the rules say you don't test it, y'all need to change the rules. But I can't believe that y'all would have rules set up like that. So, all I'm asking for is just check the creek, see if it's safe to walk around in. The reasons that you would check this creek is because Avondale, it's been there, that creek that I live on runs underneath Avondale. Now, Avondale's been there for, I don't know how long it run, probably hundreds of years. They did textile stuff that, who knows what kind of chemicals they used. But I talked to these people that live on the property downstream from the creek, and they tell me about times when the creek used to run red one day, and yellow the next day, and different colors because stuff was getting dumped in there. That's back then. Maybe it's been cleaned up, maybe it ain't. There's a sinkhole up there, it's forming right now. The sidewalk's falling in. They've been cones put up for months, somebody knows about it. Nothing's been done, nothing's been tested. This water may be potentially hazardous to everybody from here all the way to Hartwell. Why aren't we testing the water? That's why I'm here today. Let me tell you another reason why. I told you about the dam. Okay, when I was a baby, I was just a few months old, my mama made the mistake of using well water to mix with the powdered milk, and I got poisoned. I about died. And my dad also drank that well water, and he got sick. Out of this same creek, and I can ask you today, "Somebody, please test this water. It may be dirty." And it ain't been tested yet, and they don't plan on testing in the future. I've called every, I've went to the agriculture building, I've went to every place I can go to, I've called Columbia. Columbia's a big joke on the phone, the DEHEC. All right? If I don't go to DEHEC, who do I go to? Why aren't we testing this water? Just, hey, the water may be clean. We may pop a test and find out the water's good, everybody'd be happy. Y'all care to ask me any questions?
Not this minute.
One more thing. I've reported debris from the dam has been, that's an ongoing case for the county litter people, whoever the law enforcement is. By the way, the city commissioner, something, Mr. David Underwood's the one that, he called me on the phone and told me that he had busted this dam, and that's how I know about it. And that's, also, he also come up here and he reported to the local DEHEC offices, which is from, you know, everything I've found Google was, if you got a problem like this, you got to DEHEC. So I did, and I did, and I did.
Time is up. Is there anything you need to say? You can finish what you're trying to tell us, but I think we got the major idea. You have four minutes to speak.
Somebody that cares about the water in Oconee County, all these waterfalls, somebody help me get this water checked out.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Woody. Okay, Ms. Jean Jennings, next.
I'm Jean Jennings. Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. The county attorney was gracious enough to expose to me his understanding of the law. I am supplying a copy of his response. Let me back up a minute. I'm going to be talking on zoning. This is what I'm going to be talking on. The county council, the county attorney was gracious enough to expose to me his understanding of the law. I am supplying a copy of his response to my challenge that I made at a previous county council meeting. As you might suspect, I have copies of my response as well. I have already given those out to council, to the council members and others. I would appreciate it. If everyone getting a copy, would please read it more than once. And if there are any words you're not familiar with, please look them up because they will be important in understanding my view. I am also attaching to my response an article from The Nerve. The author of the article has a good understanding of what central planning is and how it applies to state government, all the way down to local government, and how that control is used to take citizens' property, citizens' rights through zoning, and citizens' tax dollars for economic development. If council will please, I have given all of your package. I don't think I've missed anyone, have I? Okay, if you, if council would take note that the lawyer's defense of denying the citizen's property rights is much more complicated and costly than my response that validates your required protection of those rights. Is it too much to ask our conservative representatives to ensure that our property rights are protected first? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. Next, Mr. Luther Lyle.
I'm Luther Lyle. Okay, and I want to start by saying that I think this is the best council and administrator we have ever had. And I've been here a long time, and I've seen a lot come and go, and I think this is absolutely the best. And a lot of good things are going on in Oconee County now. One thing I'm involved in is Destination Oconee. And they have done a number of things to help improve things for the county and for the cities in the county. And we, for an example, we have a hotel, a first-class hotel coming to Main Street, Walhalla. And that's, that's something we've needed a long time. So they're, they're helping improve the downtowns in all the cities throughout the county. The, another example is at our museum, Museum of Cherokee in South Carolina, the visitation has increased fourfold in the last year. And I don't know if all that is due to Destination Oconee, there are a number of factors there, but things keep looking better. Now, as you all know, Oconee County is unique in many ways. We are probably the best county in the state. We offer more than any other county. We have everything that any other county has, plus some. We have lakes, rivers, waterfalls, beautiful scenery, historic sites to see. We also have the only, like I said, the only Native American museum in South Carolina is in Oconee County. And we are also the only county in South Carolina named for a Native American village site. If you think about all, the names of all the other counties in South Carolina, Oconee is the only one named for a Cherokee village site. We have just purchased that site due in part, a letter of recommendation from Mr. Mulder and from Destination Oconee. We went to the state land bank and requested funding to purchase the property from private landowners. They agreed, and so we bought the property, and it will be part of our park system. So that's another thing about Destination Oconee, you will actually be going to Oconee. The destination would be Oconee Town. So anyway, the point is, I think we're doing a great job here. Y'all are doing a wonderful job, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Rayme.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mulder, as you know, I'm Mayor Westminster Brian Rayme. Came tonight just to thank you for what you've done with Destination Oconee, with the program, with the Economic Alliance. When I first got elected, it was a very short time before they both approached me and started offering to help. They didn't come and ask for anything. They asked what they could do to help. During the time I've been mayor, they have been a huge support for us. Anything that we've asked, Ms. Hartman's tried to do. As you know, we've got the cleanup challenge that was so big because of her. We've had several cleanup days, and we get 15, 20 people show up. But with her influence, her promotion, we ended up with 90 people showed up in Westminster. Huge event. The downtown grant that we've got, the commercial improvement grant, that wouldn't have been done without her. Westminster does not have the resources to get all this stuff done that she does for us. And she and I have got a lot of plans coming for Westminster. I just want to let you know that we do appreciate what you've done, what you let her do, and hope that you'll continue supporting that program because the cities need it, the rest of county needs it, and it's something that we cannot afford individually. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff Crenshaw.
Looking at the agenda, I just, I want to get up and speak to you this evening, and notice Destination Oconee being on the agenda. And then at the end, I'm going to talk to you about Oconee being the destination for just a few minutes. But I don't know that I've publicly thanked Richard and Janet, you know, and what Mayor Rayme was talking about a little bit. And we started organizing and talking about, you know, we had an idea of doing a litter pickup in Oconee County. And Richard and his staff and Janet, you know, they certainly supported us in that. I don't think, like the mayor said, I don't think we would have had the success that we had without their marketing and just the ideas that they came up with. And, you know, you think of Destination Oconee, well, is that, is that somebody going to be coming to Oconee? But when it comes to litter, you know, for those of us that have already arrived or already been here, it affects us as well. And so it, the quality of life of the citizens, and since then, the cities that have done a litter pickup, COBA is organizing a, another litter pickup, looking at Highway 11, maybe sometime in November. So I hope we can continue and maybe make the great Oconee cleanup a yearly event and do it in the spring next year as well. So, you know, Destination Oconee, and I noticed on the end of your agenda, you're talking about maybe county offices closing early on the day of the solar eclipse. And that, that may not be a bad idea for the, for the staff, especially nonessential folks. From all indications, meetings that I've had with emergency services, you know, if, if the numbers hold true, we're probably going to see people in Oconee County, numbers that we've never seen before in our, in our history, with, with everything being already full. So, you know, we'll be, we've got some extra folks on hand, extra folks in 911. But a lot of folks potentially are coming Monday, and that may give those nonessential offices a possibility to get home because we expect possibly some traffic issues if the numbers come that, that's predicted, so. But thank you.
Thank you. Tony Adams.
Yeah, I'm Tony Adams. I'm speaking for the Fair Oaks Youth Center. Again, I want to thank the council, Mr. Mulder, Mr. Root, for the support that you guys are giving us. Everybody in the organization realizes that we wouldn't be able to do what we're doing now without this. But we all feel good that you're going to like the return on investment from what we're The signed lease, which was signed what week before last or the last week, it has stimulated some good progress. And I just wanted to bring you up to date on that. And of course, the subleases and things like that will be run by Mr. Root before anything is finalized. But the childcare center, we're working on sublease right now. That particular center is wanting to be able to start renovation by September the 1st. Hope to open up January 2018. And we're also working on sublease with the quilt trail ladies. They're wanting to get out of the location here in Walhalla and into Oakway as soon as possible. We're also having our first community event. We're having a movie night cruise-in Saturday, September 16th, on Old Ball Field. Only thing that could hinder that would be in Clement Wood. You can't use these big blow-up movie screens in the wind, can't use the sound equipment in the rain, so. May the man upstairs will smile on us again. But there's, we got our first planning committee meeting tomorrow night, and after that, we'll start publicizing this event. There's also been some preliminary discussion about shortly after the cruise-in, movie night, to hold a sock hop in the gym. So the community's starting to get involved in it, which is, which is our goal. But getting to the important part, we just started our first volleyball season ever at Fair Oaks Youth Center. And we've got 33 players and eight volunteer coaches. So that's, and it's going real great in the gym down there. Our soccer program is getting started back up with practice. Well, it's been going every year, but they're starting practice. I don't have the final numbers, but it's over 30 people participating in that right now. And of course, we had our basketball program in the gym last year. And it's looking like we're crossing our fingers and hoping that we'll be able to offer Dixie softball next spring. And so, none of this would be possible if it hadn't been for what you guys have done or are doing for us, and also what School District did for us before you guys took ownership of the property. So I just want to take off to you to thank everybody. Like I said, I don't think you'll be sorry. I think you like the return on investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Mr. Markovich.
Good evening. I am Tom Markovich, and glad to see y'all here today. I wanted to say a few words about the scenic highway ordinance that you're working on. I guess it is an ordinance. First of all, let me make it beyond clear. I totally support scenic highways, and the program is, is being implemented to continue to have a process whereby we can create scenic highways. I think they're really important to the county. Now, that being said, last month, we redid a sign ordinance. A sign ordinance, and that's probably the right thing, the sign ordinance basically makes it very, very clear that you cannot have a billboard on a scenic highway whether it's federally designated, state-designated, county-designated. That's fine. I'm okay with that. Now, however, in order to create a scenic highway, there's no ordinance required. It's simply done by a resolution. There is no public hearing at the planning commission. There's no public hearing at the council. One simple vote on a resolution, and poof, all of a sudden, a land use regulation has been implemented. I believe that's a violation of Home Rule. I believe that it is mandatory for the council to enact that type of regulation by ordinance, and that specific type of regulation requires public hearing. So, again, I don't have problems with scenic highways. I think they're very important to the community. But I really think that we need to relook at this idea of how that ordinance, how that, it's not an ordinance, how that scenic highway becomes a scenic highway. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council member comments?
Adam, Chair.
Yes.
I just want to ask Mr. Mulder what the process is for someone getting their water tested. Does the county have any involvement in that?
No, sir. That, the regulatory agency over that water quality is going to either be DEHEC or the EPA. That was one suggestion I was going to make to him after the meeting, if he was here. Maybe I contacted the local office for EPA to see if there's any involvement that they would like to be involved with. So, no, sir, the county does not have any type of regulatory authority over the water to the state or any kind of creek on private property, and don't have an arm of organization to do that. But DEHEC and EPA would probably be the two places that he would need to go to, and unfortunately, he doesn't seem to be getting any attention at the DEHEC offices. So I hope he'll continue and eventually get that attention.
Can you find out and shoot me an email about the cost for water testing? I don't think that's something that should be so prohibitive that the average person cannot afford. I mean, if, if anybody had a concern about their well water, I mean, those are valid concerns. Where would they take a sample to, and what would be the cost to test that? I would like to know. Any other council member comments? Nope, we're good? Okay, so please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you, Mr. Root. Mr. Davis, the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need a motion to approve the minutes of July 18th.
Madam Chair, before we proceed with that, can I make a motion to amend the agenda to add an executive session item to discuss the contract between the county and the GHS land agreement?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
All in favor of amending the agenda to include this executive session item?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Is that proper?
Yeah, that is proper. I didn't hear if there was a call for an A or a B.
Opposed? No, we're good. Contract.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve minutes July 18th, 2017.
Second.
All in favor of approving?
Aye.
Sorry, I forgot to ask if there are any corrections or changes that needed to be made. Likewise, I will abstain because I was absent that meeting. Okay, so all in favor, once again?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, special presentation by Ms. Janet Hartman, Destination Oconee.
Good evening, Madam Chair, council members. The best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago, but the second best time is now. This Chinese proverb tells us it's never too late to start. The same is true for community development and community planning. Should we have done corridor planning 20 years ago, before all this development came in? Should we have been in a better situation, had we put more resources in our downtown planning? And would our parks and our public access areas be more world-class if we continued to invest in them? Sure. The best time to have done all these things was in the past. But the great thing is, the best time to do them is now. It's not too late, and now is the best time for Oconee County. We can now plan for the future generations of the county. And Destination Oconee is a roadmap to that future, to plan for the future. It is not a plan that's going to be taken care of in a couple of years. It's an ongoing plan. It's a, it's a roadmap to the future. It encompasses all geographical areas of the county, and it also really affects everyone in the county to some degree or another. Eighteen months ago, council appointed these seven members to a Destination Oconee Action Committee, representing the different districts of the county and two members at large. You asked them to analyze this large document, to go through it and prioritize the recommendations in the plan, and also to identify potential funding sources. As we went through the plan, the goals that were identified were to capitalize on the abundance of our natural resources. We're very blessed to have what we have for natural resources in our area. To promote the uniqueness, uniqueness in our downtowns. And they are unique, and there are special things about each of our downtowns that we should be celebrating. To create a strong sense of place, a distinctive cohesive destination, thus Destination Oconee. And really to focus on the quality of life issues. There we go, sorry. Focus on quality of life as the driving force in everything that we do. So I've, before this meeting, I presented each of you with a written report detailing the efforts of your, of your action committee. I do not have time tonight, obviously, to go through all of that report nor the plan. What I would like to do, though, is cover just a couple of the, the early successes that Destination has, Destination Oconee has had over the past 18 months. Obviously, the first and most visible is our Gateway signage program. The whole issue behind Destination Oconee was to brand and market the community as a cohesive destination. There's a new logo branding that is being used, and obviously, with the two new gateway signs here at Clemson entrance on one, Highway 123, and then also Highway 11 north coming in from Pickens County. These are our welcome mat to the community. This is the first impression people get when they come into, into Oconee County, and it sets them up for the things that they're going to see. And it also shows that we take pride in our community. These two signs, I'm happy to announce, were both paid for with, with grant funding, the state PRT, and also the National Heritage Corridor. Paid for the grant, those grants paid for the two new gateway signs. But as we continue to improve our entrances into the county, we will recycle the signs that we move. As we replace a sign, we will recycle. So on this slide, you see a sign from Highway 107 had been damaged, so we replaced it with the one we took off of Highway 123. Once we refurbished the, the damaged sign, we took it out to Highway 123 coming in from Georgia. So we're going to continually improve our entrances because as people come into the community, we want them to know that they've entered Oconee County. Because next, they will go into our downtowns. A very specific initiative, and a lot of the initiatives in Destination Oconee speak to our downtowns, and, and spending time, whether it be improving the downtowns, adding some vitality, adding some new businesses, all those different things are discussed. One of the specific initiatives was to do a street audit in our downtowns. So over the past year, we've done two, and these are something that you would do on a fairly regular basis. But we had a number of, of folks, and this, these two slides show the people that were involved. We literally walked down through the downtown, and just kind of with a critical eye, take a look at what is good in that community, what can we expand on and, and make better a look at what is good in that community, what can we expand on and, and make better, what are some of the improvements we need to make? Out of those street audits came punch lists, literally, that we gave to the cities, and cities were involved, but we did a list of the things that maybe we could do to make things better in their community, and these are initiatives they will continue to work on. So in the community, or in the city of Wahala, it was notice that noted. I don't know what's going on with the clicker. Can you switch? Sorry. Mine isn't working, you're going to have to do it from there. So I'll continue if we can get the projector working. But in the, in the downtown of Wahala, it was noted that they needed to replace their trash cans because it was just kind of an eyesore. And three months from that street audit, we were able to replace 12 of the trash cans. So now in downtown Wahala with their streetscape, there are 12 new trash cans. And those were partnered together with their Downtown Development Corporation, which has formed recently, along with the city of Wahala and also Destination Oconee. In the downtown of Seneca, as we did the, the street tour there, one of the things we noticed was awnings, whoop, okay. Awnings that needed to be replaced, and that too has happened on one of the, a couple of the buildings in downtown. But again, as we talked, there's kind of a punch list that the cities will be using to continue to create that environment where people want to spend their time and their money, but also where they want to possibly look at, look at opening a business and being a part of the community. I will continue. Another specific initiative in the Destination Oconee plan was to do a countywide bi-local program, and what was born out of that was a think, was Think Oconee. Bigger than a bi-local program, Think Oconee is really a way to get people to think positively about the community, about where they spend their time, where they spend their money, and to support local events. Each of us can take a personal approach to spending time in Oconee County and making things more positive. With the Think Oconee initiative, we created kind of a promotional piece to that, and we had 4,600 reusable shopping bags that are now distributed throughout the community. 9,200 of the decals, the car decals have been distributed throughout the county. So people are really jumping onto this. It's a positive, a positive program for the community, and it's pretty far-reaching. Not only does it show bi-local, but it also talks about the recycling centers. We partnered with the recycling centers because what better way to be positive about your community than to think Oconee and recycle? So the recycling centers each now have a banner of Think Oconee, so as people are coming and going, there's a constant reminder of what's going on in the community. And then one step further, we've partnered with the farmer's market. When the farmer's market started their season, they have our reusable shopping bags and our decals. Some of the vendors are actually using the shopping bags as a discount. So if you come back with your Think Oconee shopping bag because you are reusing and recycling, they will give you a discount on your purchase. So just some nice partnerships. And then the last one that I'll talk about is the school system. They too will be showing our Think Oconee banners at the stadiums this fall when the football season starts. Just to segue into another part of Think Oconee was not only the recycling, but also the litter pickup. And you heard just a second ago from, from the sheriff, but the Great Oconee Cleanup held in April of this past year, just another extension of thinking positively about our community and taking pride in where we live. Five organizations came together, 200 volunteers, 2,300 pounds of litter, and out of that came the Downtown Cleanup Challenge is what we called it. We had some discussion how great it would be if we did this with the county. Let's go into each of the cities and see if we can get the cities to also garner some support and some, some folks to come in and show their community pride. So we issued a downtown challenge to all of the cities. If they would participate in a cleanup, we would award them a $500 participation award. Those funds would go directly back to the community to do some project in their downtown. And then the, the overall winner, the group that had the greatest impact, would then be awarded a $5,000 beautification grant. We are happy to announce, and you've probably already seen this in the news, but Westminster was the winner of that challenge. They had 90 people show up on a Saturday morning. And if that doesn't tell you they have some community pride, I don't know what would. But 90 people showed up, they collected 1,460 pounds of litter in a couple of three hours on a Saturday morning. So it just goes to show that there's a lot of, of people coming together and really showing their community pride and, and support of the different initiatives to bring people into our community. So we've had some great successes with Destination Oconee, and the majority of that has been done with limited funding. For us to continue to have success, we will need to have dedicated funding for the, for the other initiatives. As your committee, the Destination Oconee Committee prioritized the recommendations in this plan, they also endorsed a list of projects that are specific to satisfying those recommendations. All of this is in the report that you received earlier, a detailed list of those projects and the costs associated. To fund this project list, the Action Committee members made the following recommendation, and so that I don't miss their wording, I'm going to read to you what was in, and it's again in your report. The Destination Oconee Action Committee members voted to make a recommendation to county council to consider the implementation of a countywide hospitality tax within the unincorporated areas of the county to fund the immediate and priority need items identified on the Destination Oconee project list, which is included in your report. And also to assist with ongoing maintenance efforts of existing recreation assets. In addition, the committee recommends county council consider funding the future flagship and capital projects with other funding options that are already identif, that are also identified in the Destination Oconee report. I presented a lot of information to you in a short time, and I apologize that the PowerPoint did not continue, but I think, I think you get the heart of the matter. As I said earlier, the, the report that you received has a lot of detail and a lot of information. What I'd like to do, because my time was limited tonight, is to request a follow-up meeting with council. Once you've had time to review the document, I would like an opportunity to sit down with you and discuss, answer any questions, discuss it in further detail. Because as I said at the beginning of my presentation, the best time to plan was 20 years ago, but we're not going to let that bother us. The best time is now, and we're going to move forward. Today is the best time for us to start working toward the future of Oconee County, and I look forward to working with you on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet, I have a quick question.
Yes.
If you don't mind, I'm not going to wait till the next opportunity.
That's perfectly fine.
On the accommodations tax, what is the current percentage and what are you looking to raise it to?
The accommodations or the hospitality?
No, it says increase accommodations tax. Potential of three to four new hotels to be built in Oconee County in the next few years. Accommodations tax from new hotels beginning 2018 dedicated to Destination Oconee projects for a period of years.
Just higher, higher revenue from the new hotels, right?
So, yes. What, so you're looking at, those, those were the funding options that the committee discussed and reviewed that would be potential opportunities. The increase in accommodations tax, we're talking about as new hotels come in, we could dedicate the funding or the additional revenue from those to specific projects.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. I thought you wanted to increase the percentage of the accommodations.
No, I think we're at the max. I think we're at the max already.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
I got a question.
Yes.
What are some of the projects y'all got in your mind?
Specific projects?
Yes.
So if I can speak specifically first to downtown development and working with the communities, we would like to be able to support their efforts in downtown with maybe matching grants. Wahala right now is doing a facade grant program that they are assisting businesses with facade improvements, sign improvements, those types of things. If Destination Oconee could have some funding to help maybe match some of those grants, and if in other communities, if they're looking to do some master plans or maybe some, those planning-type things that help with, or even if they're looking at improving some of the amenities that they have, that we would offer some matching funds to those. Not that we would take it all on, but that we would help them in those efforts that they have. So that would be something for, specific to the downtowns. The other projects listed within this report are a number of things that speak specifically to improvements that are needed at our county parks, at our boat ramps, at, um, parks, ramps, I'm looking at some of these others. Additional signage, we've had great feedback on our, on our entrance gateway signs. I keep hearing, when are we going to put one on South 11? And I, my answer is when we have more funding. But, so looking at additional signage, we have a wayfinding signage plan incorporated into these costs. That would be signage that takes people to our tourism assets, gets better direction to those different sites, also incorporating into that some wayfinding signage in our downtowns. So partnering with the, the different groups where we can help to maybe provide some additional support.
Does any of that help, a welcome center involved for Oconee County?
Um, I believe the... If it's not specifically listed here, it could, that could be one of those flagship projects that's added for future.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I also wanted to bring up, because maybe perhaps some of you do not know because you don't make it to my end of the county, but the sign on Route 11, to my dismay, was vandalized. I mean, they stole the, the solar panel, and there was graffiti all over the sign. Who painted over it? Because I was going to go out there and wash.
It, it wouldn't wash, so we've covered it to the best we can, and we're waiting to get the true paint to redo.
Okay, because it doesn't quite match.
No, it doesn't quite match.
All right.
But they used a specific paint and, and, and the finish, so we, we're working on that.
It's okay from a distance.
A distance, right.
But once you approach it, you realize there's an issue.
Yes, so we are still working on the replacement of that solar panel.
Okay. Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mulder, your turn.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. We'll skip straight to your second readings on the agenda, as we have no public hearings or third readings, first of which is ordinance 2017-19. This is a reverse multi-county industrial park approval process with Pickens County. Historically, we request Pickens to be our counterpart as we're approving a multi-county park for a particular industry locating in our county. Pickens has actually requested that we serve as a counterpart to the statutory requirement for multi-county park in Pickens. Their project is Project Exodus, so this project is actually locating in Pickens, but in accordance with state statute, they need a partnering county to approve an incentive for a multi-county industrial park and all those that come with it. So as an exchange for us partnering with them on their project, they will forward to us 1% of the tax revenue generated from Project Exodus in Pickens County. So this is approval to assist Pickens with setting up incentives for their Project Exodus. First readings this evening, first of which is ordinance 2017-20. This ordinance would authorize the signing of a lease agreement with the Foothills Alliance. If you recall from our previous discussions, Foothills Alliance is a support center for abuse, and they work very closely with the Sheriff's Department, specifically our child and elderly abuse investigator. There's a partnership that coincides between those organizations. Usually, the Foothills Alliance serves as the starting point for the investigations with regard to particular cases of abuse. They have been looking for a Oconee County location for quite some time. As of now, any of our citizens are required to drive to Anderson County to receive that service. They are a designated, designated agency for our county, so they've been looking. We have the property on the backside of the law enforcement center, the Lower Lane House that was purchased as part of the detention center expansion. We have exhausted our need for that. There was some discussion about auctioning that property off. The, Mr., our investigator with the sheriff's office came to me and said, hey, I have a great need for it. Would you be willing to talk to me? We looked at it, Foothills Alliance came up and looked at the property, and they feel it'd be a great location, especially since it's so closely located to the sheriff's department. So we're proposing and recommending that council approve this ordinance that would authorize a lease for the Foothills Alliance to occupy that particular property. Next particular item is ordinance 2017-21. This ordinance would actually grant an easement right to Duke Energy. This easement right is being granted to Duke Energy to provide service to the New American Legion post facility that's located next to the DSS building and our Veterans Affairs offices. They, the, the building itself is not on our property, but the Duke Energy lines are required to extend through our property in order to service that particular facility. So we're recommending that council approve this ordinance that would authorize the granting of an easement right to Duke in order to service the American Legion post new facility. Ordinance 2017-22. This particular ordinance was spoken about during the public comments section. It would actually amend the Article III of our Chapter 26 and replace the scenic highway committee and substitute the planning commission to serve as that particular role as designated in the ordinance. As we've discussed in the past, we looked into the fact whether we could do away with that particular committee and allow those responsibilities to be borne by the planning commission instead. As we researched that, determined that we can, this particular ordinance will allow the substitution of the planning commission to serve in the role and responsibilities of the scenic highway committee and still maintain that committee responsibility and designation in Oconee County. The final item in the first and final, first readings is ordinance 2017-23. This particular one is entitled only. Kiwi Key Special Tax District, which is the fire district for the Kiwi Key area, they had issued general obligation bonds for some equipment purchase and facility improvements a number of years ago, back in 2007 to be exact. These bonds are the responsibility of that special tax district. They do not fall within the responsibility of the general obligation bonds of the county. Therefore, there is no full faith and credit issued for the county to pay those back, and there is no crediting of that bond towards our 8% cap and debt limit. So this is a, a bond that was issued by the tax district. By law, since the tax district is created by the county, we're responsible for approving the ordinance that would issue any debt associated with that tax district. Again, I restate, that tax district is responsible for paying that back. There's a part of their millage that we, they assess on their own, on themselves to pay it back. As part of the new retirement requirements, they've seen a significant hit to their budget in order to pay the additional percentages on their retirement of their staff. They've been looking for ways to save money in their annual expenses. They have this outstanding debt, and they contacted me to see what the possibilities would be to refund and reissue or refinance that particular debt at a lower rate. We analyzed it, talked with our bond attorneys, in addition to our financial advisor with regard to bond issuance, both of which said, yes, there should be an opportunity there to lower the interest rate. There should be an opportunity to save thousands of dollars a year in their budget to free up additional cash flow to pay the additional retirement requirements. So what we're proposing is, on their behalf, to issue a refund and reissue bonds associated in the amount of $530,000. They have about $530,000 left on the principal of the 2007 bond. Any of the expenses associated with issuing those bonds, the council and/or advisors will be the responsibility of the, the tax district. So there would be no responsibilities of the county or its general fund to issue the, the bonds that they're asking to refund. So we are asking and recommending that, on their behalf, we approve ordinance 2017-23 to refinance, if you will, their outstanding general obligation debt of $530,000. No resolutions. We do have action items this evening. The first is a conditional acceptance of roads located in Phase 1 of the Shadowwood subdivision. This particular topic, if you're on the Transportation Committee, has been well-vetted at the committee. It came out as a recommendation from the Transportation Committee. This was a subdivision where the roads, there was some discussion about whether they were supposed to be public or private. Additional discussions occurred with the developers about the proposal for that, those roads to be accepted. It was determined by the committee that, given the current condition, that we should accept those roads, but on conditional acceptance, as you've stated here, we've stated here one through five in the approval on the agenda. So we are recommending that those roads tonight be accepted by vote by county council, but the full needed acceptance won't occur until those conditions are met that you see there on the agenda. And I... And I won't read them to you. Hope you've had a chance to read those, those conditions. The next one is a 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial JAG Grant Notification. The Sheriff's Office may be receiving an allocation of $20,920 from the Bureau of Justice Assistance. Part of their grant requirements is the, the legislative body that governs the finances of the organization must vote to accept those funds and, and accept notification that we've applied and may be receiving that money. So this particular item is not necessarily a vote, I know I said vote a moment ago, is not necessarily a vote, it's merely just a notification of the available funds that we may be receiving. So if you would like to vote to say, yes, we are hereby notified, so be it, but by being on the agenda and by virtue of presentation during a public session, you are hereby notified that we have the potential to receive those grants. Again, that is a procedural format from the funding agency. Board and commission appointments, you see them listed here, Building Codes Appeal Board, Conservation Bank Board, Board of Zoning Appeals, and Agriculture Advisory Board. As just stated earlier, we do have a new business request. It's a possibility of closing nonessential county offices on August 21, 2017, around noon for the solar eclipse. There is an expectation of close to 2 million people from outside South Carolina coming in, the majority of which is going to fall within the line of the total eclipse section. We are in a prime location, we're in three states into our particular area, in order to see it, since we are in the direct line for full eclipse. We are expecting tens, if not 100,000 people that will converge on the roadways. Those are the people coming in just to see the eclipse. We have weekenders coming in, everything is full, we have multiple events that are going on. We have had a number of meetings, as the sheriff has said, with emergency management and the Sheriff's Office about the traffic concerns, the accident concerns, people just stopping on the side of the road to get out and look, people trying to watch while they drive, running into people, causing accidents. The lake is also an extreme concern, because if you look at a certain section of the lake, it's directly under the, the yellow line on that map. So we have multiple concerns. If you've ever been out on the lake during the fireworks for July 4th, at night when those people all leave at one time, even though it's dark and they're leaving slowly, it gets very rocky on the lake. So one of our concerns is, once the daylight is back and people are done watching and they take off full throttle, if all those people are leaving out nearly at the same time, you're going to have a number of issues with capsized boats is what our concern is. Hopefully, we don't, but those are some of our concerns. The reason why we're asking for this is the safety of the staff. This was something that was brought to my attention by one of our council members, saying, hey, you know, the safety of our staff, we need to make sure that we get them off the road so that they don't contribute. You have the school district that's also going to be letting school out right after the eclipse is over, it's going to be have parents and school buses on the road. We'd like for our staff members that do have students in, in, in the school system to be able to make arrangements for their kids either prior to or after the eclipse. So we're asking that you consider the closing of county nonessential offices at noon on that particular day, August 21st, next Monday. We do have the three executive session of items that we do need. Two of the items following executive session under first readings of the following ordinances, 24 and 12, are directly related to a particular executive session item. Both of those items, as you see listed here, deal with the same matter, excuse me, and that is the construction of the spec building at Golden Corner Commerce Park. Santu Cooper has certain procedural formats for how you are going to borrow the money, and depending on the, the, the motion or the, the manner in which council will choose to issue that particular loan with Santu Cooper, that will determine which of these two items. We do not need both, we just need one or the other, and that will determine the contractual discussions and advice that you receive from our attorney, Mr. David Root, during executive session. But both of those items deter, deal with the borrowing of the funds from Santu Cooper in order to construct the spec building at Golden Corner Commerce Park. That's a mouthful, that's a very important, big agenda. I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair, to administer from here on out.
Okay, so we'll start with second reading, ordinance 2017-19, an ordinance to develop a jointly owned and operated industrial business park in conjunction with Pickens County.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. First reading, ordinance 2017-20, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a real property lease agreement between Oconee County as lessor and the Foothills Alliance as lesssee.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Ordinance 2017-21, an ordinance granting certain easement rights to Duke Energy for the purpose of locating and maintaining electric intercommunication facilities on county-owned property.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Ordinance 2017-22, an ordinance amending Article III of Chapter 26 of the Oconee County Court of Ordinances in certain limited regards and particulars, namely as to the elimination of the Scenic Highway Committee and the substitution of the Planning Commission to carry out all the duties, et cetera, et cetera.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just, as Mr. Mulder stated, the genesis of this was because we didn't have anyone on the Scenic Highway Committee, and we couldn't get folks on there, so we wanted to replace what they did.
Mm-hmm.
And so the Planning Commission said, it had to go through them anyway, so we'll take up those duties, and we'll just do it all within the commission. So that's the amendments we made to the text, that was, it was limited to that. The, the point that Mr. Markovich brings up, though, I think at least, I think is a good point. I think it puts us at, when you read it in conjunction with a billboard ordinance, it at least raises a question, or puts us in a gray area. And so I'd like to, if y'all see fit, amend Section 26-153 of that ordinance, subsection C, which is the part that says you, you all would determine which roads become scenic by way of a resolution, that's the very last word, and just substitute resolution out and put ordinance in.
So you'd have three readings, public hearing?
Yeah.
Instead of just...
Correct. I think that it's the safest way to do it, I don't think it's going to be more onerous, we've had one highway put in this way, so, just my thought on it. I think it's, it's safe as it is, but that's a safer way to do it.
I'll, I'll agree with that amendment. I, I will make, sorry, I will make that amendment to change from resolution to a ordinance in regards to scenic highway and replacing, so stated by Mr. Root.
It's a motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
Amendment.
Any discussion on the amendment?
Amendment to the motion.
Yes, any discussion on the amendment? Okay, so all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
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 Okay, it's unanimous. So we need another vote to accept the ordinance as amended?
Second.
Another motion?
Well, we have the motion.
Just a few.
Okay.
You have, you had the motion.
So we have a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion.
I think we had a motion.
We got, we may have. We've got an amended...
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the amended ordinance?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Very good.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ordinance 2017-23 entitled only, authorizing the issuance and sale of a not exceed, a not exceeding $530,000 general obligation refunding bond for the Kiwi Fire Tax District, et cetera, et cetera.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Action items, conditional acceptance of roads located in Phase 1 of the Shadowwood subdivision.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Scott, I just want it perfectly clear, because years back, when I was one of these other people in council, we were so hot and fraught to approve all these roads around the lake, only to find out later on that they buried the stumps under the roads, you remember that? The culverts were caved again, and then we found out the roads wide enough. Then we found out that they counted the concrete curb and the sidewalk as part of the road, and we'd already took these things in. It cost the taxpayers, you remember that, a, a lot of money to straighten them out, because then now the roads were our possession. So we're not, we've, we've, we're going to have that safeguards in place, that the roads are going to be wide enough.
Yes, sir, we, we have, the roads are already in place, and that's part of the, the issue that we dealt with, the roads are in place. They were supposed to have been accepted years ago as part of the development of the neighborhood. For some reason, that was never actually finalized. There are some particular issues with the roads, but I say that to say, the roads are in great shape. We actually had our Roads and Bridges Department and engineer go out, we did some sampling of it, we, we tested the roads, we looked at the condition of the roads, we looked at the width of the roads. Everything looks in great shape, there's no issues that we had concerns with from a, a condition standpoint. So we were recommending that, based on the condition of the roads, they were, they seemed to be well-built, we did some core sampling of them, to look at the depths of, of the asphalt and the rock. Everything seems to be in great shape at this point in time.
Scott and Rick done looked it over.
Yes, sir, we, well, Rick has not. We had our road department go out there and look at it, and Scott Carroll was not part of that discussion at that particular time. Matt Kelly was here as our engineer at that time, he went out and looked at it. If, if we know we can make him happy, then they're probably in pretty good shape. We did look at it, Rick Martin has not looked at it, all those took place prior to that turnover in the organization. And Kyle, Kyle Reed has looked at it, who is currently with us and working under Mr. Martin.
Rick, and then we'll look at it at some point before it comes final, right?
Well, obviously, this is a conditional acceptance, that they have to complete all these things, but if they complete all these things, once you vote today, then we're required to accept them in, because they are conditional.
If Rick Scott says, okay, then I, I would feel very comfortable.
I'll see Scott can get out there and take a look at it, boy, just see if he's comfortable.
Mr. Iger, a quick question for you, if you... Based on the, everything's, I know y'all have had a lot of discussions, which is great, appreciate y'all working with us, and appreciate all the work that we, that...
Thank you.
The road, road crew has done, and, you know, speaking with y'all. Everything on the conditional acceptance of the roads, Phase 1, understanding Phase 2, everything from that is complete understanding from your side and our side? Y'all are, y'all are okay with the, as it's stated?
Yes, we, yes, we're fine with that.
Okay.
And, uh, Mr. McCall, just to address your comments, Matt Kelly was there and inspected those roads, those roads were built. I mean, the, the road department was out there every step of the way, every piece of pipe that was laid, the rock that was put down, asphalt, they, they were inspected by the county.
The reason I brought that up, we had, we took some roads over, there were other neighborhoods, and no sooner we took them over, they, they caved in, they were stump dumps buried under the road, the culverts caved in, and, uh, they fudged on the, counting the concrete curb, and it cost the taxpayers a lot of money.
Yes, yes, I understand that.
I wasn't referring to you at all.
Right, I understand. But, um, we feel these roads are in good condition, we've got 50 houses out there, there've been concrete trucks up and down that road, there's no sign of wear and tear, so we feel good about it. Okay, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor of the conditional acceptance, Phase 1 of the Shadowwood subdivision?
Aye.
Opposed? That's good. Okay, the 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial JAG Grant Notification, you said we do not need a vote for that? Is everybody comfortable with just knowing this is happening?
And if you want to vote to say we're hereby notified of the potential of receiving the funds from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, just so it's on the record you can, but it's not required, it's purely just a notification.
Just information, okay. All right, moving on, board and commission appointments.
We need to move it from the agenda, if we're not going to vote on... Motion to approve. Just, I mean, it's on the agenda, I mean...
All right, then, let's have the motion to approve. I need a second on that.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, OCD here. All right, board and commission appointments, we've got 1, 2, 3, 4 vacancies. Building Codes Appeal Board, one at large seat. We have not gotten any recent new applications. We need to do something about that. District 2, you have anybody for Conservation Bank?
Not a soul, unless we draft them.
Okay, we'll do that. District 5, Board of Zoning Appeals, that's an important one.
Gentleman resigned, health issues, I don't have anybody to replace him yet.
Good, yeah, okay, and District 3, Agricultural Advisory Board?
I don't think... Yeah, I, I didn't even know that he, I guess he resigned.
Okay, well, surprise, surprise. Okay.
When do you start paying these people?
We'll hold off on that until next time, we'll think of something. New business, possibility of closing nonessential county offices on August 21st around noon for solar eclipse.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Do we want it to actually be noon, or is 11:30 better, or what do you think?
I think noon is plenty, I believe the solar eclipse is supposed to actually be 90 minutes long with a, a full eclipse around the 2:50 timeframe.
2:36.
2:36.
I think it's three hours long.
So, 2:36, so even if it's three hours long, 90 minutes for half of it prior to the full eclipse, you're looking at, you know, one, what, one, one o'clock...
Okay.
Before it even actually starts, so I think that gives an hour for us to get closed up and everybody to get to where they need to be. I feel that everybody's going to be positioned still early in the morning to where they want to be, to get, you know, to get their spot if they're going to an event, there'll be an holiday event, but it still gives them an hour to get out of here and, and get home and do what they need to do.
Okay.
So I think noon is fine, we don't want to close up, you know, not do any business that day, unless you choose to, but I think we can still operate in the morning and, and leave at noon.
Okay.
Oh, I have one. Have you thought about changing the date?
Put it on Sunday.
If we're on Sunday, we'll move it to the next day.
Okay.
You want to explain that one?
Was that a private joke?
Well, we have a community in South Carolina to be unnamed that advertised a particular celebration of the event on August 17th.
Oh, okay.
Now, they, they were going to go ahead and have their own special viewing on the 17th, without the rest of us...
They didn't have those good proofreaders, did they, Stephen?
Right.
Okay, all right, so, um, any other comments on this? All in favor of closing your...
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay, next, we need to recess to executive session for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding a contractual matter in relation to the design and construction of a spec building within the Golden Corner Commerce Park to include discussion of funding and collateral issues in relation thereto, number one. Number two, to receive legal advice and discuss employment personnel matters related to workforce reduction in the treasurer's, treasurer's office. And number three, to discuss the contract regarding the GHS land.
Yeah, GHS land in Oconee County.
Okay.
Some move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of the recess?
Aye.
Thank you very much, we'll recess then.
Motion reconvened.
Circuit.
All in favor? Aye. No action was taken in executive session. We need to move on now to the first reading of ordinance 2017-24 entitled only. An ordinance authorizing the transfer of county-owned real property located within the Golden Corner Commerce Park to the Coney Economic Alliance, et cetera, et cetera.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we need a motion to amend the agenda to remove resolution 2017-12 that's no longer needed.
So moved. Second.
All in unison now. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.[1793.01][1793.01](applause) I know.